All right, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Wednesday, that's not Wednesday, it's October 20th, 2020, 7:00 PM, I see on the agenda it notes that it is Wednesday. It is October 20, 2020, 7 o'clock, and this is the city council meeting being held virtually for the city of Edina. And as I welcome you to the October 20 meeting of the Edina City Council, I want to remind folks that this meeting is being held electronically to comply with the governor's Stay Safe MN order and to ensure the safety of all residents and staff, all members of the city council, staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. So before we begin, as usual in this virtual world, there's a few things we need to cover for those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through our council correspondence web form, voicemail on our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important that all of you know that all comments have been submitted, that have been submitted, have been read prior to the start of the meeting. But tonight, there's going to be two times when you could potentially call in if you are interested and provide comment via telephone. The first is during community comment, that is a portion of the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and you're allowed in that portion of the agenda to speak about anything that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. The second time you can call in is to comment during this singular public hearing matter that we have, which is about the potential certification of delinquent utilities. So if you want to call in for community comment, or you want to provide testimony for the single public hearing matter we have in front of us this evening, call 800-374-0221, 800-374-0221, and the conference ID number is 166-3828, 166-3828. You'll be given three minutes to speak, our city manager will watch the clock, and he'll let you know when your three minutes is up. And remember, if you already provided feedback, you don't have to call in tonight again unless you're so inclined. And now, to make sure all residents will have an opportunity to participate, we want to know, you to know that we are not going to act on the singular public hearing matter we have before us this evening. That public hearing will remain open until noon Wednesday, October 28th. You can leave a voicemail with your feedback at 952-826-0377, or submit a comment online at BetterTogetherEdina.org. Again, a reminder that the only public hearing matter we have this evening, that will remain open until noon Wednesday, October 28th, at which time it will be closed, and you'll hear that in a motion this evening. We've also got a Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting this evening, usually we have those the second and fourth Thursday mornings. Over this, this week, we're handling it right after this meeting. So we will be adjourning, but not closing down the WebEx, and we'll just be waiting to get a signal from Scott Denfield, from our technology people, that we can move again back into full session as the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. There won't be any opportunity for commenting during the HRA meeting, there is no public hearing matter scheduled in that particular portion of the, of the meeting this evening. So thanks for your patience in advance, as we work through some of the technical issues involved, our clerk is having some difficulty getting back online, our director of communications, Director Bennerott, will handle that until she's back with us. Remember that there's almost 20 people participating from their homes trying to make this a successful meeting for everybody. They're doing the best they can to make this a success, and if there's any glitches in any technology, we'll try to get it fixed as quickly as we can. So now, we'll call the meeting to order, and it is Wednesday, October 20, 2020, it is now 7:05 PM, and roll call, please, Director Bennerott.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Brindle?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hublin?
Here.
The next matter on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, divisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening, is there anyone who wishes to modify the meeting agenda? I have one modification, but does anybody else have any modifications? All right, what I'm suggesting is that under seven, which is the Special Recognitions and Presentations, we add a seven D, which is a recognition of Roger Knutson, and I think it'd be a more appropriate place to handle it in the agenda than when we are dealing with hiring a new city attorney later in the meeting. So I would suggest that we add seven D, which is recognition of Roger Knutson. Is there someone who would make a motion, one of my colleagues, to adopt the amended meeting agenda? Some of them. Second? We get a motion by a member Anderson, second by a member Fisher, to adopt the agenda in its amended form. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the potential adoption of the amended agenda.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Hublin?
Aye.
The amended agenda is adopted. Now, we're going to go to community comment, so again, for those residents who would like to speak to the council about something that's not on tonight's agenda and not scheduled for a future public hearing, you should be getting in the queue now by calling 800-374-0221. Again, the conference ID number is 166-3828. An operator will ask for your name and address, and put you in the queue, and then Director Bennerott will bring you up on, on the telephone, and you'll be able to speak to the council for three minutes, and as a reminder, city manager Scott Neal will provide our timekeeping for us, and it will notify you when your three minutes are up. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue for community comments?
Our first caller tonight is Mr. Andy Brown. Operator, will you please unmute the line of Mr. Andy Brown? Andy, before beginning your remarks, please clearly state your full name and address for the record, that will start your three minutes of speaking time.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. Mr. Brown, welcome. Mr. Brown, can you hear me?
But I can't hear you, they haven't, hello?
I can hear you now, Mr. Brown, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Andrew Brown, 5512, Park Place in Edina. I'm calling in regards to a teardown, that is, a teardown house that's going to happen directly north of me at 5508 by LDK Builders. I appreciate the city's position that they have not received the survey yet from the builder, however, it was passed around the neighborhood earlier this week, and I appreciate that all the help from Kerry, your arborist, the city building official, but I would just like that when the city does receive these documents, that they look to the Erickson case from 43 with the Supreme Court, because it looks like there's no point of beginning on the existing survey that they've been passing around. Also, that any drainage does not go south to my property. Currently, to the west of me, a property on Brookview has a sump pump that goes to within one foot of, has a pop-up valve that goes to within one foot of the property line, and my family and I have been forced to put in tens of thousands of dollars in water remediation, drain tile, sump pump, water retainage area in the yard, along with retaining walls, et cetera, in order to stop that water from affecting our foundation. So essentially, if, and as the city, if the city receives this document, there's no documentation on where any sump pumps on this northern property would be or drain, so I'm hoping that the city looks very carefully with an eager eye over that submission to make sure that I don't receive any more water from the north. Essentially, I'd be getting it from all directions. I live right near Minnehaw Creek, and while I understood the implications of buying this house, it's kind of unfair, more than unfair, to be taking on everybody's water, not just what I deal with. So I hope that the city takes it beyond just a civil issue and takes its responsibility from a legal standpoint regarding that, that case, regarding the survey and the water issue. Also, there's an issue of lot coverage involved with that property, doesn't seem to show how the driveway is doubling and where that water will go, and it should really be pointed to the street. The city and taxpayers spent actually a lot of money to put in sump pump collection reciprocal units underground when the street was reconstructed, so I'm hoping the city takes advantage by asking the developer to actually hook that house up to that system that was implemented, that we all paid $16,000, $17,000 plus in our street reconstruction as part of it. And then the other comment that I had was regarding the third fire station in Edina. I was hopeful when the city manager mentioned that he was going to give a briefing on where that stood this fall, and I don't, I don't see that happening. That's a very important service that my family is, would appreciate actually happening and occurring in their lifetime.
Mr. Brown, I guess your time is up, I heard Manager Neal say your three minutes were up, so.
Okay.
We're, we're continuing to work on that fire station issue, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Hublin, members of the council, I do not have anyone else on the call at this time. Because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I would recommend that we wait a minute or so before we move on in the agenda. My clock shows it's 7:13, so at 7:14, if I don't have any other callers, I will let you know, and you can move on at that point.
Thank you, Director Bennerott.
It's 7:14, and I don't have any other callers, so I think it's safe for you to move on in the agenda.
All right, thank you, Director Bennerott, we'll move on now from community comment to the city manager's response to community comments that were made in the prior meeting. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor, we had one call, one community comment at the October 7th meeting, and that comment was regarding concerns for public safety and health over an anticipated meeting that was coming up at that time of the Streets Funding Task Force. And the question was around the fact that the Task Force, there was a Task Force meeting that was coming up that was going to be live and in person, and that's something that we have avoided doing for obvious reasons here, but this particular meeting was requested after a lot of discussion between the Task Force and staff, and it was really requested by the Task Force, they, they just felt like the limitations of the, of the Zoom environment, the WebEx environment, were, were really diminishing their ability to be effective in terms of, of discussing options and, and really learning about their subject matter. So they met with Director Milner, and they looked at our, our plans about how we would, could conduct such a meeting, and we did conduct such a meeting, we did it, as I said, at the request of the Task Force, there were 10 people that participated, seven Task Force members and three staff. It occurred on, on October 12th at the Public Works Maintenance Facility Lunchroom area. No other members of the public were in attendance at the meeting, but the meeting was recorded, audio and video, and it has been on our website for a few days now. Tables were spread out in such a way that each individual member of the Task Force had it, had his or her own table, so they were more than six feet apart, they were masked the entire time with the exception of the time that they ate their dinner together, and then they, but they continued just their, the spread out at that point. We, we thought it was a successful meeting, and I think that the in-person aspect of it was, was helpful in that regard, and you'll be hearing again, you'll be hearing the report from this group at, at one of your work sessions in November. And that was the only community comment that we had.
All right, thank you. Did that cause any council member to have a question or a comment related to Manager Neal's comments? All right, we will move on now to the consent agenda, and there are several items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, I have a couple questions about item 6G.
6G, as in girl?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Tree Canopy Grant Agreement.
All right. Anyone else? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 6G? Some of. Member Fisher moves?
Second.
Member Brindle seconds. A discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to adoption of the consent agenda items with the exception of 6G. Director Bennerott, oh, Clerk Allison, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm here now, so I will take over for my duties for as long as it will last. Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hublin?
Aye.
The consent agenda with the exception of item 6G is approved and adopted. All right, back to 6G, which is Proposed Resolution 2020-110, that would approve a grant from Hennepin County with regard to healthy tree canopy, just about a $50,000 grant, and Member Brindle has a question or comment about it.
I just, I, there are two clauses in the agreement that, that I find interesting. On page eight, clause 17, the agreement includes encouragement that the grantee establish a recycling program. So I find it interesting that, that we are, we're talking about a grant to study the number of, or study the tree canopy on public property within our city, and, and that evidently the grant requires that we have a recycling program that collects newsprint, office paper, glass, plastic and metal. And then on page nine, clause 22, the grantee affirms that all officers have paid Hennepin County personal property tax. So who are the officers, and how does the city confirm that personal property tax has been paid by the officers? And it looks to me like the, the approval of the grant would be based on whether officers have paid their property tax, so who are the officers?
Mr. Swenson, has a matter?
Yeah, I actually am not certain who's considered the officers, I did ask Roger Knutson to review this contract before we moved it in front of council.
All right. Mr. Knutson?
The officers, in my opinion, would be the city council and the city manager.
Okay, and so, in other words, in order to apply for this grant unencumbered by all the things that are in the grant, we have to have implemented a recycling program, which is, I understand it's moot, but I don't understand why it's part of the contract, and we have to make sure that all of us have paid our personal property tax. I, I just wonder why those are included in the contract.
Attorney Knutson?
I, I don't know why they're in there, they are there, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that they're there.
And I think one possibility could be the, the other grants that we've been getting have been related to recycling from the county, so I just believe they're very focused on the tree canopy right now and recycling programs right now.
Suppose it's also possible that there are cities that don't have a recycling program that are getting tree canopy grants or eligible for them conditioned upon them setting up a recycling program, but don't have a recycling program?
Well, I suppose, and it looks like leverage for the city, for the county, to be expanding programs, albeit beneficial programs, but they're, but they're doing that by saying, well, if you're going to get the tree canopy grant, we're going to make sure that you have a recycling program and that we've got your property taxes. So my personal property taxes, I, if there's a reason why I couldn't pay them, would that cause this grant not to be granted? It just seemed very odd to me that those would, those clauses would be included, it just seemed really strange.
Attorney Knutson or Mr. Swenson, any comment?
Hi, this has been, I think, our fifth tree canopy grant with the county, and we haven't had any issues with follow-up information regarding the contract in the past.
Okay. All right, well, maybe, maybe I read this one a little more with a fine-tooth comb this time, who knows? But I guess my final question is, how often did we request the grant, and how often do we do this? How, how often do we take an inventory?
Yes, so tonight, actually Luther Overholt is, is in this meeting, he can, he's the one that requested this grant and got, got this grant rolling. So if Luther, if you, if you can check in, you could give maybe a history of how you get these grants?
Yep, so this is the second, second portion for this grant. Last year, I applied for step one, which was up to $5,000, and that was, we just, we were just getting that completed right now, that was for a ash tree inventory for all the ash trees in the city, and so that's just wrapping up. I applied, you know, again, about six months ago or so for, for this one, which is part two of the grant, which is up to $50,000, and this will be for completing our tree inventory of all trees in, you know, city, city property.
Okay.
And then, you know, finally, we'll have an idea of, you know, actually what we're, you know, what we're managing, what we have out there, and when, when they do the, the tree survey, we get the species, size, and a condition rating, zero through four, zero being a dead tree, four being a perfectly healthy tree, and then they also go through, and you know, when they do that, they make comments, you know, hazard limb, or, you know, dead, you know, should be removed, and stuff like that, as they go through an inventory of the trees, you know, if there's significant defects, they, they comment on that too, just so I kind of know what's going on with the trees, once I get all, all the results back.
Sure, okay, thank you. Well, those are my questions, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Member Fisher?
So first of all, Mary, I will tell you, your, your comb has much finer teeth than mine. I, I did, I did review the document, but not quite there, but I would say, I actually totally understand where they're going with the recycling requirement, I mean, if, if communities aren't picking the lowest hanging fruit and complying at that level, then the county should be discerning about where they, with their grant money, you know, because if you're in, you're in, and so I, I'm actually pretty good with that.
All right. All right, thank you, well, I will move 6G, the Tree Canopy Grant Agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Member Fisher, seconds. Any further discussion with regard to the Resolution 2020-110, which would approve the Hennepin County Healthy Tree Canopy Grant Agreement? All right, roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hublin?
Aye.
The 6G item is adopted, Resolution 2020-110 is approved. That concludes the consent agenda portion of the meeting this evening, and the only thing I wanted to note was on 6K, the resolution accepting donations, we had some generous gifts to the Park and Rec Department for trees and other things from clubs and residents, Joan Kiefer, Kilo Dale Garden Club, Dog, Ivor, Toker Rude, Patrick Lombardo, thanks to all of you for your donations to the Park and Rec Department. All right, now we'll move on to the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda, and Manager Neal, we have Commissioner Callison with us this evening, I believe, and I'll let you provide the introduction.
Welcome.
Ambassador Commissioner.
Over the years, Commissioner Callison has attended our meetings and all the meetings of city councils in her district, and I will tell you that of all the commissioners, I believe she has the most cities of anyone in her district, she certainly has more than most of her, her colleagues on the county board, but she dedicates a fair amount of her time to reaching back to mayors and city council members, and I got to speculate that's because that's where she came from. But this will be her final appearance before you tonight in the capacity of a county commissioner as she is leaving that position at the end of this year, and with that, I just want to thank her for, for her help many times and for talking to us and conferring with us along the ways on county policy, so thank you, Commissioner Callison.
Thank you, Mr. Neal, I'm looking at a lovely bouquet of flowers from the city of Edina.
Oh.
What a nice reminder, and it's an Edina mug as well, so I'll have that reminder even after the flowers are gone. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers and staff, it's my pleasure to be with you for this final time, although I have to say, I feel a little bit like I'm in Minnetoka when I see Perry Vedder's face and Carrie Teague's. And Councilmember Brindle, I will check on the personal property tax question that you asked, I can make an argument on the first, the linkage, as Councilmember Fisher did, that it has to do with environmental protection and really making sure that the communities are focused on that issue, but I'll check on the property tax question, I don't understand that, that at all. I brought on a PowerPoint, and I'm going to see if I can share it, keep your fingers crossed. It's on my screen, I assume it's on yours?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. There are really two major topics I want to focus on because they are the two major topics for 2020, as you might expect, one is COVID-19, and the second is what's happening in Minneapolis in terms of civil unrest, I'll touch briefly on the budget as well, just to give you a picture of that, and I'm happy to take your questions as I go along, so don't hesitate to stop me. Let me talk first about COVID-19, I want to give you a sense for what we're seeing in the county as opposed to the picture you usually get of what's happening at the state level and nationally, so for background, you should understand that Hennepin County has about one-fifth of the state's population, about 20% of the population of the state of Minnesota is located in, in Hennepin County. We have, as of last week, the 17th, 26% of total cases in Minnesota, we have 34% of the hospitalizations, and we have 43% of the fatalities. So with 20% of the population, we have a disproportionate number of cases, hospitalizations, and certainly fatalities, and these numbers have changed over the course of the past six or seven months, as you might expect, as the virus has migrated to different parts of the state, but we have had more than 40% of the, of the fat, of the fatalities, the deaths, since the very beginning, I believe, so there is a disproportionate impact, and you probably can guess as to what's going on, at least in part in Hennepin County, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the disparities we're seeing by race, because that's part of the story of COVID-19. And this chart lets you see, or this graph lets you see who is contracting COVID-19 in Hennepin County by race. So the first two bars are for the white population, the blue bar is the percent of cases in the The blue bar is the percent of cases in the white population, and the blue or the orange bar is the percent that that population, that racial group is in the county's population. So for the white population, 44% of the COVID cases occur to people who are in the white population. But the white population makes up 72% of the county's population. So a much smaller percent of white people catching COVID than you might expect based upon population. By contrast, the percent of cases in the black community is 25%, even though they are only 13% of the county's population. And you can see, as you go down that graph, um, the category of other resembles the black population in terms of a disproportionate impact. Asian goes the other way, um, multiple races, you can get a picture for what's happening. This chart will tell you within those population groups of, um, what is happening to people who contract COVID-19. The blue portion of the bar is non-hospitalized cases, the red is hospitalized cases, and the black is fatalities. So again, the top line is the white population. 87% of people who are white who contract COVID recover at home, they don't go to the hospital. That red bar tells you how many go to hos, are hospitalized, and the black bar is fatalities. So it looks like about, um, 13%. If you divided that almost in half, you'd have hospitalized cases and case fatalities. The black population, interestingly, um, has almost the same percent of people who, who recover at home, so 87.9%. But you can see a larger percentage of folks go to the hospital, a smaller percentage, um, pass away from COVID. You, again, you can see that for various racial groups, but I would call your attention to the American Indian population, which is the very final bar on this graph. For the American Indian population, only 67% stay at home, recover at home. And you can see just visually how small that blue portion is. 27% are hospitalized, the remaining percent case fatalities, it looks like it's about the same as for the white population. The other group that we know that's disproportionately affected is, or the demographic, is seniors. And this will give you a picture of what's happening for seniors in Hennepin County. So the first set of boxes relate to, to, um, people in long-term care settings. The hospitalization rate for those who are on long-term care settings is 27%. The case fatality rate is 31%, almost a third. The median age is 81. By contrast to that, if you are not in long-term and you contract COVID, the hospitalization rate is around 8.2%. Case fatality rate is 0.7%, and the median age is 34. I thought you might like to see by city in my district, and particularly for Edina, what we're seeing in terms of cases. Edina has had 1,022 confirmed cases, 49 deaths. You might compare that to Minnetoka, which is about the same population size, 800, 805 cases and 37 deaths. So, we have spent a lot of, um, energy this year responding to COVID. We spent, we sent 6,500 employees home on March 17th. That is not our entire workforce. We have around 8,000 employees. There were some employees who simply could not work from home. Um, that would include predominantly or prominently our corrections officials, so folks staffing the jails, staffing the workhouse, staffing the juvenile detention center. They needed to stay, we needed to keep them safe, as well as the folks in those, in those facilities. Much of our work is regulated by the state of Minnesota in terms of, in term, including how we do our work. And in many cases, we have to do work in person, um, get clients to sign documents in person, bring documents in, in person. So we had to get waivers from the state so that folks could do their work at home. And that was, um, something we partnered with the state to do. And then, of course, as we reopen service centers and libraries, we had to make sure we had the appropriate equipment and the appropriate protocols in place. And I'm, I'm really pleased that we haven't had large outbreaks in any of our facilities from COVID-19, that the protocols we've put in place and the protective equipment have been fairly successful in making sure that we don't have employees or, um, residents infected by COVID-19. We recognized early on that people who are homeless were at particular risk for COVID-19, and we moved 544 high-risk homeless individuals into hotels. Those were individuals who, because of their age or underlying condition, we thought, we thought might contract COVID. It also helped us to decompress our shelters, again, to fight the spread of COVID. It's been a very effective strategy. Again, you haven't heard of a lot of outbreaks in our shelter facilities, but it is very expensive. So prior to COVID, uh, we were spending about $200,000 a month on this population. This strategy has been costing us 2.5 million per month, which we have used, we have paid for using CARES Act monies. We received about $220 million in CARES Act funding, and we have distributed that broadly across the county in a variety of ways. But I would call your attention to three areas. The first is small businesses. So we have recognized that the federal government did not address resources to small businesses in their aid packages, and we have tried to fill that gap. We have set aside about $40 million for this, um, endeavor, and we think $40 million will enable us to meet the needs of all of those businesses who apply and who are eligible. And so far for Edina, we have distributed $475,000 to small businesses in Edina. We have set aside about $17 million to deal with housing. These are predominantly for tenants, to make sure they do not lose their housing, so we don't compound, um, the housing crisis and the homeless crisis that we already have. We have taken action most recently to, um, set aside $5 million of that amount directly in payment to landlords so that they can offset or they can, um, eliminate the tenant, the arrears that the tenants might have by receiving that payment directly from the county. So again, to the benefit of, of tenants. And then finally, we have allocated about $44 million for HCMC. We deferred the May property tax payments by two months for, um, a wide number of, of property taxpayers, and we now have done the same thing for the October tax payment, although it's only one month due in November. And essentially, if you qualified in May for that, um, extension, you probably have, you probably will qualify in October as well. And we're a public health entity, so we've distributed a million masks, over a million masks to the community, and performed more than 6,000 COVID tests. And finally, we successfully conducted a primary election where, uh, two out of every three votes was cast by absentee ballot. The other theme, of course, this year is the unrest in Minneapolis, and, um, I don't think it's possible to talk about it without first acknowledging the tragedy and the senselessness of the death of George Floyd, but also to acknowledge the work of our sheriff's department and our sheriff in trying to keep the peace. It's been a challenging, um, environment. It continues to be unsettled, um, in various parts of the county with, um, demonstrations arising, um, spontaneously, whether it's a local event or a national event. But these are some pictures from, of what we saw in May after the, um, initial civil distress, civil unrest. This is the East Lake Library. I believe at that point we had eight libraries open, East Lake was one of them. The picture on the left is across the street from the library, the picture on the right is the interior of the library. About five years ago, perhaps fewer years than that, than that, we opened the South Human Service Center, um, on East Lake Street. These are pictures from that facility. So the picture on the left is the windows being, windows have been broken out on the ground floor. There was water damage from the sprinklers, a pharmacy in the building was looted, and then another private business was damaged as well. There was also damage to North Minneapolis, this is our North Satellite. You can see water damage as well as the destruction of property, and this is a facility to which we are not returning. We did take steps to protect property. You can see the, uh, jail with a fence around it, um, the windows at the Stuntor Library being boarded up, and windows also on Government Center. And we have periodically had to, um, re, reattach, reattach the plywood and take steps to protect these buildings. So in response to this, we have, um, we are repairing damaged county property. We estimate, estimate the damage to be $5 million. We do have insurance, but it has a million dollar deductible. We have authorized a million dollars in overtime for the sheriff's office, and as the year is not over yet. We have abated taxes for damaged properties in Minneapolis. We have invested $6 million into a fund, um, a loan fund to support business recovery in Minneapolis, and particularly to fight gentrification. And we have, for many years, been focused on reducing racial disparities, and we more recently, um, adopted public, a public health, um, emergency, adopted racism as a public health emergency, hoping that that will help us focus our attention on this really underlying cause of, of so much of the challenges that we're seeing across the county. And in terms of the budget for 2021, we approved a max levy which has a 0% property tax increase. Uh, because the property tax base in Hennepin County has grown, there will be a number of, of residents and businesses who will see a reduction in their property taxes because of this zero levy percent, or 0% levy increase. It does mean we have to cut about $40 million from the county budget, so that will be a focus of the next several months. And we are dealing with a budget that has more unknowns than, than usual. We certainly don't know how long the pandemic is going to last and what the expenses might be that we incur. We cannot continue the hotel, um, costs at 2.5 million dollars a month, so we need to shift strategies there. We don't know if there'll be federal and state assistance. Um, and we anticipate that we will have to spend some money to, uh, distribute vaccines when they are prepared, that the population that we serve and the, um, way the state, state and the federal government approach. Just a word about the 2020, the absentee balloting started a week or so ago. These are some dates that are important, coming up to November 3rd. We can start counting ballots in Hennepin County before the 3rd. They may have started today, I haven't confirmed that, but I think it's two days in advan, or two weeks in advance. And we also could count ballots up to a week after the election, so long as they are postmarked by November 3rd. So what I understand is on November 3rd, we will be able, we should have counted all the ballots that we have in hand, but we will not have a final number until a week later, November 10th, after all the remaining absentee ballots have come in that are eligible to be counted. And finally, I put together some information about, um, COVID-19 and elections, so if people have questions and they have, um, they need assistance from county staff, these are some numbers where they can contact people or some website information, and I'm happy to help them as well. So that is my, um, presentation. Um, as City Manager Neil said at the outset, it's been my pleasure to represent Edina on the county board for 12 years, and I have appreciated the welcome, the warmth of the welcome you've always given to me, as well as the support you've shown me. So, um, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, um, I was so pleased to hear that we'd sent some flowers and, uh, an Edina mug out to your, uh, home today. I wish we could have done more. Uh, I think, uh, there are several of us, myself included, that, uh, want to make a few comments now, and I'll, I'll make mine, and others may have some they want to make as well. So, um, I have to admit that I have a distinct bias when it comes to Jan Callison. I think she's just an incredible person. It may be that, uh, we have this common ground, uh, from growing up on the prairie that creates that sort of bond that I feel toward. Uh, we've always had that geography of North and South Dakota, uh, in our backgrounds, and that familiar heritage has bound us, and I think it always will. She was blessed, uh, to be as smart a person as you need to be in life, but she doesn't wear it as part of her personality. What you get from Jan is thoughtfulness, humility, respect for others and their opinions, and mostly, and I iterate mostly, but not always, a gentle manner and subtle way of guiding people to the right decision. Sometimes she needs to take charge, and that's okay too, as she will not tolerate the inefficient use of time or redundant conversation for very long. If you're in a large group meeting and you need a good direction on an issue or a matter, and it needs to be brought to conclusion, you can give Jan a quick sideways glance. An unspoken communication, and what occurs in about a nanosecond is she knows exactly what she's going to say, and you know what she's going to say, without a word being expressed between you. She'll then take charge and bring the group to a decision point they all feel good about. Jan needs to leave public service now, as she has other things that she needs to do in life, but I certainly will miss her a great deal in the work we've done for the If humans were elements, uh, she'd be palladium, which is more valuable than platinum. She is that valuable as a human being and to the world. Honored to be her friend and colleague, and I wish her all the best life has next to offer. Thank you, Jan.
Jim, you couldn't have said a more, you couldn't have made more beautiful comments, and you've left me, um, fumbling for words and incredibly grateful for your friendship and your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Mr. Mayor?
Member Fisher?
Well, you certainly made that a hard act to follow. Um, I will keep mine very short and just say that, you know, I've had the pleasure to know you for, uh, a while, and, um, and I just want to thank you for your leadership. And when I say leadership, I define leadership as serving others, and that's what I've always loved about your kind of leadership, that you're there for the right reasons, you've always been, and you've always served others. Uh, it's not ever been about yourself, and I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike. I treasure your good, good opinion as well.
Member Brindle?
Hi, Jan. So I've had the pleasure of serving on a number of committees with Jan, where we've been members of the same committee or where she has chaired the committee. And it's just, I mean, um, there's, I, I think, I don't know, I mean, every once in a while you run into somebody and you click. And I just feel like the two of us have really enjoyed our time together. And, um, there was, A, I was looking for my email, and I don't see it, but, um, there was, or may upcoming be, uh, a celebration of Jan's career, and I was asked for some comments, and I was very honored to be asked. And, um, and so it was with pleasure that, that I really just recounted how much fun it has been to, uh, to serve with you, to be your friend, and I hope that we can continue that friendship going forward, since we're both going to be free as a bird after December 31st.
Thank you, Mary. And you know, my, um, I have two grandchildren living in Edina, so I'm in Edina more often than I ever used to be. So you may come, you may come to see me on the street someplace, or perhaps getting, uh, a pastry here or there, or enjoying what Edina has to offer.
Good, I look forward to it.
Very good. Anyone else? Uh, it's Member Anderson.
Yeah, hi, Jan. Ronnie Anderson, we don't know each other in the way that, uh, my colleagues do. Um, your updates, um, in the time that, uh, I've seen you reporting on what happens in Hennepin County have been so thorough and so professional. Um, I'm very, very impressed. So I thank you for your time and for your service. So it seems it's a long time, and you've been in public service longer than that, so, uh, it's deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I really appreciate that feedback, uh, very much.
Kevin?
Sure, Jan, I just wanted to echo my colleagues' comments and my gratitude for your service. I've had the privilege of watching you not only in Edina, but also in Excelsior over the years, and, uh, and can't say enough about your, your relentless, uh, good nature and service, and you do it in a way that doesn't get a lot of press these days, which is quiet and persistent and competent, and that is, uh, that is real leadership, and I can't say enough about how much I appreciate the work that you've done and how much you've made the world and our communities a better place. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Kevin. You know, I, I think my communities and, and my council members, and I say my because for two more months they are, but they may be a better commissioner. And I think you've all helped me make, helped me be a better commissioner, so this is much, as much a celebration for you and the values that you bring and the expectations that you hold.
We appreciate you coming by one more time and giving us, uh, one of your stellar updates, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you. Nice to see Perry as well.
And we'll see you in Edina, and we'll do breakfast again.
That would be great. I'll look forward to it.
Okay, me too.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks.
All right, and now Chief Schmitz. Now we've got another important milestone to celebrate this evening. Chief, with us? Yeah, there he is, I see him.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, uh, I think we have a proclamation before you and the council, and, uh, I'll wait for that action to take place, and then I have a few words to say.
All right, oh, very good. We'll do it that way. All right, uh, so the proclamation is for Ruth Schmoll Day in Edina, October 30th, 2020. Whereas Ruth Schmoll joined the Edina Fire Department in the summer of 1975 as a part-time secretary dispatcher, and whereas Ruth has continued to serve the city and its fire department for the last 45 years, including her current role as administrative assistant. And whereas Ruth has been affectionately known as Chief Schmoll because of her expert institutional knowledge and historical relevance with the fire department. And whereas multiple generations of paramedic firefighters and other fire department staff have benefited and excelled in their service to the city, thanks to Ruth's expertise and guidance. And whereas Ruth has also organized major public service efforts, including holiday toy drives, which she counts as one of her proudest accomplishments in the job. And whereas Ruth will retire October 30th, 2020, as the city's longest-tenured employee. And whereas Ruth's contributions to the city spanning- And whereas Ruth's contributions to the city spanning five decades will long be remembered and appreciated. Now therefore, I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of Edina, do hereby proclaim October 30th, 2020, to be Ruth Schmoll Day in the city of Edina, and congratulate Ruth Schmoll on her successful career and enduring influence in Edina, and thank her for her many years of service to honor Ruth's lifetime commitment to public service in our community. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
There are second.
Second.
It is motion by Member Fisher, second by Member Brindle, to adopt the Ruth Schmoll Day proclamation for October 30, 2020. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. October 30, 2020 is hereby declared Ruth Schmoll Day in the city of Edina. And knowing Ruth, she'll be over there at Jerry's working part-time. I don't know if you've run into her over there, but I seem to run into her there all the time. It's like she has two full-time jobs. Unbelievable amount of energy, you know, working those five decades at the city, but then working part-time as well. It's really something to behold, and she's always got a wonderful smile on her face, just like she does in this photograph, and she's always happy to see you and happy to see everybody that she encounters. So she has really been a treasure chief, and I'm sure you're going to want to talk about her some more as to how valuable she was to our Edina firefighters and the fire department and the city. But Chief, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for adopting this proclamation. And Mayor, I got to echo a lot of the great things you just said about Ruth, because yeah, she's truly an outstanding person. I'm accepting this great honor on behalf of Ruth. Mayor Hovland will typically introduce Ruth as the oldest city employee, of course, meaning the longest tenured. She wanted me to extend her thanks and appreciation for recognizing her 45 years of service with the city by bestowing her this proclamation and honorary date. We at the fire department have been privileged to have such a great teammate for so many years. For 45 years, she has served the department and the community in so many ways, some of which you highlighted in the proclamation. She has been a humble and quiet leader in the organization and will leave a legacy of outstanding service and dedication. We will miss her deeply, but we are excited for her well-deserved retirement. We'll be honoring Ruth for her years of service on Thursday, October 29th, with a drive-through send-off at Fire Station 1 from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. Swing by and wish her congratulations and drive away with a cupcake and a cup of root beer. Thank you again for recognizing Ruth with such a great honor.
Thank you, Chief.
My pleasure.
All right. I wish Ruth could have been here with us. It would have been really terrific to have her. She's probably over there selling snow, uh, snow blowers.
Probably all sold out by now.
Yeah. She would go home by now.
Right.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Chief.
I'm, I'm just going to chime in for a second. I would like to request that we send this proclamation over to Gordon Hughes, since he was city manager through a good amount of time prior to the time that Scott Neal has been here. So I think if he does not know about this already, I think he would appreciate knowing.
We will certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. I've got the, I'm distracted here because I've got a battery running low. I'm trying to figure out how to switch over to another computer here, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Member Fisher?
So I, I don't know Ruth, but I wish I did, and I do want to congratulate her, and I don't want to miss this moment to just make sure all the rest of the staff knows that the bar has been set. So start doing the count, figure out how many years you're going to have to hang around and work, and see if it all works.
Say, Manager Neil, would you ask Scott Denfil, or Scott, can you hear me? Would you send me, send me that WebEx invitation again that's not, it's not cooperating with me in terms of coming up here?
Yes, I can send it to you.
And I'll get it off my, send it to my city, city council address.
Is this what they call in radio, an on-air production moment?
Yeah, I don't know. So let's move on to a proclamation, which is Extra Mile Day 2020. And Mary, if I disappear, you can keep it going.
All right.
So Extra Mile Day, November 1, 2020, reads as follows. Edina, Minnesota is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when it is, when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their proofable contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2020. Now therefore, I, James B. Hovland, Mayor of Edina, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2020, to be Extra Mile Day in the city of Edina, and urge each individual in the community to take the time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her, her own personal life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Is there a motion to adopt a proclamation for Extra Mile Day?
So moved.
Second.
Is that Member Fisher?
Staunton.
Anderson.
Staunton.
Member Staunton? Thank you. Moved by Member Brindle, second by Member Staunton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Proclamation's approved. Now, we are on to Roger Knutson. I thought we should talk a little bit about Roger Knutson, who is retiring at the end of the month, and one of his partners is going to be recommended to replace him. But I just want to, wanted to comment that in this portion of the agenda where we're doing these recognitions and presentations, that when Roger came, Roger, Roger's a triple C guy. I don't mean by that that he has had COVID exposure three times. I mean, that he's cool, calm, and collected. He falls into that category. You know, his reputation preceded him when we hired him over a decade ago to be the city attorney for us, and, and you can tell from the time all of you have spent on the council that nothing stumps him. His answers are direct, understandable. He's got all that white hair and mustache for a reason. Years of practicing municipal law and trying to make sure that cities he represents are well-represented and that they're, they don't step in any unnecessary messes, which Roger has been good at protecting us from doing, or even council members, protecting them against stepping into a mess in the context of a meeting. He has served us so well. He cares about his client. You can tell that. He cares about our city, and we have been really blessed to have you, Roger, with us for now over a decade as our city attorney, and we wish you all the best in the retirement years to come. I can't imagine that you're actually retiring, that you still won't work part-time as a lawyer. It just seems to be too much, what is the, them in there to, to just want to let it park itself somewhere. So, but nonetheless, we congratulate you and thank you for being the great public servant that you've been for us. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Kevin?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I want to echo your remarks and my congratulations and admiration for Roger. I've had the chance to know him not only as a city council member in Edina, but also as a member of the city attorney community in Minnesota, where Roger is among the most respected and, and deans of the, of the city attorney community. And he has been, he's been around longer than I have and has been a source of wisdom, not only for the cities that he represents, but also for those folks that, like me, who might have been younger lawyers coming up, looking for advice, and he was always easy, quickly willing to dispense advice and give a, give a kind word and help somebody figure out the right answer, and he always had the right answer. Those who've watched our meetings probably have been aware that he, he is also very judicious in the number of words he uses to advise his clients, and it's somewhat legendary in the community. So the only thing that I worry about in his retirement is that he, and I don't know if he still is, but at one point Roger was representing cities, enough cities that he had meetings, reputed to have meetings four nights a week, four weeks a year, and so, four weeks a month. And so the only thing I'm worried about in retirement, Roger, is that, is that the secret to your marital success may be over now. Turn home on those four nights a week. But the best of luck to you, and thank you for all your wisdom over the years.
Thank you, Councilmember Brindle.
Manager Neil, sorry.
No, that's okay. I, I just want to say a few words on behalf of staff, because we interact with Roger and his team on a daily basis, and, and not just me, I'm, I'm not a funnel for Roger. We have a lot of different folks on our team have access to Roger when they need his expertise, and he, he's just prolific in terms of, of being able to respond to our questions, and actually not just with, with verbal answers, but with the actual document or the resolution or the motion that we need in terms of taking an idea or a direction from the council and making it into something that we could actually adopt at a council level. So I'm, I'll always be grateful for that and that experience of, of working with Roger, and I know that all of this praise is, is probably really offending his natural Nordic way of looking at life. But I do want to share with, with Roger and with the council, this beautiful, I'm trying to see if I can get a good look at it for you, shadow box that we had, we had made with his actual name plate from downstairs, and then one of our commemorative coins, and we'll ship this to Roger's office tomorrow, but we also, we just wanted to let him know from, from our staff standpoint, how much we appreciated work, how much we appreciate working with you, Roger, and, and we wish you the best in your retirement.
Member Fisher?
So I just, I'm glad the mayor's back, because, you know, I needed to call him out that he got it wrong. You know, he, he used the three Cs.
He left the meaning.
That, see, he was scared. He'll have to watch the recording. He used the three Cs, cool, calm, and collected, and it's really the four Cs, right? It's cool, calm, collected, and compact. And, and as, as Kevin noted, I, I've really never met anyone that packs more thought into fewer words. And if you think about your role and what you do for a living, what you've done for all these years, it's really an important trait, because these council meetings, all of these bodies that you're supporting, you know, it's not about you, you need to be there for them, and you do that so fluently and so concisely, and it's, it's a really, it's an art. And as somebody that talks too much, I really appreciate the art of that. So, thank you.
You know, just one more thing I wanted to say, one of the most insightful things that, that Roger's ever said to me was how, how he acknowledged his place in our kind of democratic institution by, by reminding me that this is not a city attorney form of government, right? It's a council manager. It's a council form of government, and city attorney and city manager are there to guide you, but they're not there to overwhelm you as, as lawyers can do sometimes. And I think Roger plays that role for, for our city and for our, our kind of peer cities in a way that just hits just the right balance.
Member Anderson.
Thank you. I, Roger, I, I know you also as a man of few words, and I definitely appreciate that. Thank you. Like Member Fisher, I find that difficult to control. However, I, what I'm, what I will really miss is our ability to discuss summer suiting and the proper rollout date for our summer suits. The material composition, exactly when, how. So if, if you can help me in finding somebody who can assist with that, if we ever get together as a group again, I would really appreciate it. Thank you so much for everything you've done for the city over all this time. Thank you.
I'll just say, thank you very much. It's been a great honor to serve the city of Edina, and it's the first time anyone has ever acknowledged my expertise on clothing. That's the first. Thank you.
Well, Roger, thank you, thank you, and don't be a stranger, and we, sometime when our new city attorney maybe has to miss a meeting, maybe you can sub in for him. Probably not.
I'll be, I'm not leaving Minnesota. I'm still leaving here.
All right. Well, super. Thank you so much. All right.
Okay, I'm back.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you. So we have, thank you, Roger. And next matter we have is we have one public hearing this evening, and that involves the certification of delinquent utilities, and Andrea Rich, one of our financial analysts, has this matter and is going to walk us through this particular issue. Is Andrea with us?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening again.
I'll share my video just to prove I am still here and share my screen. Are you seeing the full slide this time?
No, we're just seeing a joint meeting, Edina City Council.
You need to select a different screen, Andrea. There you go.
Okay. Do you have the full screen?
We do.
Fabulous. Thank you. I have just a few slides. It's on the certification of delinquent utility bills, the process, and where we stand today. In September, we sent out certification letters to all accounts with balances over $50 and delinquent 30 days or more. After November 4th, a $35 administrative fee will be added to those accounts, and we will continue to take payments here at City Hall through November 20th, at which point after that, payments can be made through the county. This is just a public hearing tonight. The final list will be at the November 4th city council meeting. Certified amounts paying interest rate of 6.5%, and they are all one-year assessment. This is how we compare to prior years. We've got September, when the notices are sent out, this public hearing, and then the final certification. So the top line in each of those sections represents the number of properties on the certification list, and then the dollar amount follows that. So you can see, we sent out 1,222 letters, but that has reduced quite a bit down to where we just have 432 properties on the list as of yesterday, representing $302,000. So the actions are, tonight is the public hearing, and November 4th will be the resolution. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Andrea? I had to walk to the other room and get my... Any questions for Andrea? I had to walk to the other room and get my, uh, city computer here. So, um, any questions from council members? All right, Andrea, standby. This is a public hearing matter. We're going to open it up for public testimony now. And, um, you'll now hear from residents who would like to provide testimony with regard to this potential certification of delinquent utilities. Call in at, uh, 800-374-0221. Again, the conference ID number is 166-3828, 166-3828. The operator will ask for your name and address. They'll get you in the queue and our director, uh, communications director Jennifer Benarott will, uh, help you get into the meeting. So is there anyone in the queue to speak to this matter?
Mayor Hovland, members of the council, I do not have anyone on the call right now. I would recommend that we wait a minute or so as there is a slight delay in the broadcast. My clock shows that it's 8:12, so I will stand by and if no one calls in by 8:13, I will let you know that I think it's okay to move on with the agenda.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, members of the council, I think it's safe for you to move on now.
All right. Thank you, Director Benarott. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on October 28th and continue the action on this item to November 4th, uh, which is the city council meeting date?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by member Staunton, second by member Brindle. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call please with respect to the motion as stated.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Motion passes. The matter is, uh, staying open until noon on October 8th, at which time the public hearing will be closed and we'll continue the item for action at the November 4th City Council meeting.
I have a question.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. So this always, um, we, we do this every year at this time and I'm always left with the same question. Why do people leave their water bill unpaid? So many of these are residential addresses and, um, and I just, I just wonder why is it that we can have over a half million dollars, $635,000 of, um, of unpaid water bills in one year? And, uh, so does anybody offer a reason?
Director Yerem.
Mayor and members of the city council, you know, I, I wish I knew what the reason was, uh, you know, and it, it varies year over year. Um, you know, I think this year may have been a unique circumstance with COVID and people being out of work, you know, and the fact that we waived late fees for the entire year may have played some, you know, may have played some fact into this, but other than that, no, I don't, you know, I don't really know that there's a specific reason.
Okay. Yeah, it is, it is the, I, I guess as we look at the number, it hasn't increased each year, but this is the largest number that we've had in the last six years. So it's a curiosity. So, well, anyway, I was just wondering. Thank you.
Thank you, member Brindle. Uh, we're going to move on to reports and recommendations now. Uh, and these are, uh, continuations of the matters that we had public hearings on at our last meeting. Those matters have been closed up. Uh, and now we've got to deal with some of these issues. And the first one Chris Hocker has, which is a, uh, motion to, it's a resolution 2020-105, which is an appeal of the planning commission's approval for first floor height and front yard setback variance 4209 Crocker Avenue. And Chris Hocker, our assistant planner, has this matter.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item is resolution 2020-105. It is an appeal by the neighboring property owner of a planning commission approval of a 2.6 foot first floor height and an 18.2 foot front yard setback variance to build a new home at 4209 Crocker Avenue. The front yard and first floor height variances were unanimously approved by the planning commission on March 11th and then also reaffirmed on August 28th. It's, uh, an appeal of the neighboring property owner Tim and Susan Grudel, who live at 4213 Crocker. Um, this was heard by the city council on October 7th with the public hearing closing for comments on October 14th through Better Together Edina and city council correspondence and voicemail, um, were the opportunities to, um, make comments. So, um, present at tonight's WebEx meeting are the appellantants, Tim and Susan Grudel, who are appealing the planning commissions, August 26th approval of the variances with a revised stormwater management plan. And Brett and Sarah Broll, owners of 4209 Crocker and their builder, Mike Linder, the contractor, um, is also present. So with that, I will turn it back to city council for final action on resolution 2020-105.
All right. Good. Thank you. Uh, as we noted, this is not a public hearing matter. The public hearing's been closed. This is a council discussion only unless we have some questions for some of the homeowners. Uh, but I think, uh, this would generally be a matter handled exclusively by the council in its discussions. Um, anyone care to begin the discussion?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a couple of questions before we get started?
Absolutely. Yeah, please do.
Um, Ms. Hocker, with respect to the house that is being proposed for the lot, other than this, the encroachment into the front yard and the, um, first floor elevation, does it in every other respect meet our zoning code?
Yes, it does.
So even though it's a large house, if it, it, it doesn't exceed the lot coverage that the, um, lot, if, if there wasn't any water issue here?
It does not. The maximum building coverage allowed is 25% and they are proposing 18.6%. So they are under the 25% maximum.
Okay, great. Um, and then I had a question just for, um, engineering, maybe it's Ross. Um, I know Ross has testified in a variety of times. Uh, I had a chance to watch both planning commission meetings, the one in March as well as the one in August. Um, and then obviously he testified in front of us before as well. Um, Ross, I just wanted to see if we're, if I'm clear on the, on the change in the drainage issues, is it still satisfying what we require from an ordinance perspective? The change from the, the underground tanks to now a ponding approach? Is that, is that satisfying the performance standards that we, that we impose on our ordinances?
It is, councilmember.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, members Staunton. Any other questions from council members?
No, last, last meeting when, um, when my questions were, uh, addressed to, I think it was maybe Mr. Binnner, but it might've been, uh, Director Milner as well. And, um, and they both felt like, from an engineering perspective, that they were satisfied. So if that's the case, then I have no more questions.
Well, I think, uh, in fact, I think there was a staff recommendation. I don't know if Ms. Hocker mentioned that as well, but staffs recommending approval of the variances.
Right.
And in terms of the height, there was a chart involved, member Staunton, that, uh, height wise, uh, the city standard, uh, is 36.25 feet and they're at 32.6.
Right.
Which is also, um, I thought a helpful piece of information from our last meeting. Um, does someone care to lead off on the discussion?
I'm good.
Member Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think that, uh, the only issue that for me that is, is here is it's, it's a large house. Um, the water issues on the site push it up a little bit higher. It conforms, um, to every other building standard that we have other than the front yard, but also falls within the prior, uh, uh, variance that was, uh, or the, the prior frontage that was existed. Um, I, I don't see any reason to not provide or approve the variance.
All right. Thank you. Remember Brindle, you have your mic open?
I do. Um, well, I, I would concur with member Anderson. Um, like I said, my, my main concern was really the removal of the tanks in the backyard. And if, if engineering is satisfied, then we have to accept that opinion. Um, as to the, um, the, the height, um, we, we have, we have ways to allow people to put a home on a property that has a high water table. And, uh, FEMA has rules that, uh, a builder needs to follow and that we need to honor that that home stay out of two feet above that water table. And, um, and so I trust that all that has been, has been done and followed and, uh, and the recommendation reflects that. So I, I would approve this. I would support this.
All right. Thank you. Member Staunton or member Fisher?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I agree with my colleagues. I guess the first thing that I think about on, on a variance like this is the issues of whether there's a practical difficulty and, and I think, and a practical difficulty that is not created by the landowner. And clearly here you have a, basically a destination for water from the neighborhood that creates a smaller building footprint, which is almost textbook unique situation. Um, and so I do think it has, um, it has that kind of practical difficulty that we need to approve a variance. Then you get into whether it's inconsistent with the character in the neighborhood and we've heard from a number of neighbors, but you know, the things that persuade me on that, even though it is a large house, it's also a large lot. And if the water didn't exist on the property, it would easily be within the zoning code regulations. And the fact that they've left it at the setback that the previous house was at is an effort to keep it within those, um, within those, those kind of character guidelines that have, that have, um, happened over the years in that neighborhood. And the fact that they didn't go to the maximum height that they could have gone. So, so I, I think it's, um, I, I think it's warranted to grant the variance in this case.
Thank you. Member Fisher?
Thank you. I, I, um, you know, I look at this and, and you know, the, the variance request is a result of the homeowner trying to comply with city rules, which is to get this out of the flood plain. Um, the front yard setback, so that's the, the floor height, the front yard setback helps to avoid the flood mitigation in the backyard, which is actually the hardship as I see it, um, on related to the variance is that it's a very unique thing to this site. You know, if you took a normal site of this size, you wouldn't have these issues if they were not taking on, um, water from the neighboring properties, probably all the way up the block. Uh, and the fact that the house will not be sitting any further forward than the previous house. Um, and there, there's no doubt, uh, this is a large house. But as I thought about it and I read all of the, the, um, submissions from the, the various neighbors, um, it, it really became evident to me that that's not the, the real issue here. Um, and it may have, may have been an issue. I, I don't even think it would have been an issue back in the March round of variance request. Um, so, so the reality is that while it's a large house, it meets all of our requirements, uh, with that size of lot. Um, so just if nothing else, on the issue of fairness, I wouldn't turn around the decision of the planning commission at this late date. I, I see no reason to do that. Um, I do want to, you know, I appreciate all of the input on both sides of the issue. I think a lot of, uh, hard work was put in and a lot of thoroughness and, and hopefully everyone can, uh, um, get along fine as, as we move forward. But I will definitely, uh, vote for granting the variance.
Extraordinarily thoughtful presentations I saw from both, uh, the property owner and the, and the neighbor on the appeal. Uh, really you don't see that kind of extraordinary work very often. And I would come in, Mr. Grudel and, and Mr. Mrs. Broll on their, their presentations. Uh, I joined my colleagues in, uh, denying the appeal or recommending denial of the appeal and approving, uh, resolution 2020-105. I think it's quite, uh, creative to be able to deal with this kind of a situation, uh, wanting to be in that neighborhood, uh, the Brolls wanting to be there, be part of Morningside, which is a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. Coming up with an idea about how to manage water from other people's properties on the back of their lot and still have a, a, a beautiful home that'll, I think, fit the character of the neighborhood. Um, it's well within our code as member Staunton pointed out. Um, I think it's roughly four feet lower than it could otherwise be. I like the idea that it's set no further forward or back than what the former house was. Uh, and I just think on, on balance for me, uh, the practical difficulties existed based on, on the water problems that are there. Uh, they weren't self-created. Other people created those problems for them. And, uh, I'm impressed that the Brolls want to be there. And I think that, uh, what I hear from my fellow colleagues and from the planning commission as well is that, uh, we think they ought to be there too. And so, uh, is there a motion to deny the appeal, uh, and to approve the 2020, uh, resolution 2020-105, which would approve the first floor height and the front yard setback variance at 4209 Crocker Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
An emotion and second to deny the appeal of the Gruddles, uh, of the planning commission's approval of the first floor height and front yard setback variance at 4209 Crocker and to approve resolution 2020-105, which would approve those variances for first floor height and front yard setback, uh, as pointed out in the staff's report. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. The appeal is denied and the resolution 2020-105 granting the variances requested is approved. Thank you everybody for your participation here and letting us work through a, an issue that was important to folks, uh, in the Morningside neighborhood. Now on to, um, the next matter, which, uh, Tom Swenson has, which is the mowing special assessment. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Uh, I was, I was not going to go through my presentation again tonight unless there's specific questions on it. Uh, I would like to remind the council that this weed mowing material was presented on October 7th and the public hearing closed October 14th. And if there aren't questions, I am asking the council to consider adopting assessment, resolution number 2020-102 regarding weed mowing.
All right. I noticed that, uh, in our correspondence with respect to all of these items that, uh, we're handling, uh, B through, uh, actually B through J, there wasn't been correspondence on any of those items, uh, in our packet. So, um, is there a motion, is there a motion to adopt resolution 2020-102, which is the weed mowing special assessment?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by member Staunton, second by member Fisher to adopt the resolution 2020-102, which is the weed mowing special assessment. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Ms. Allison?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Resolution 2020-102 is adopted and the weed mowing special assessments are imposed. Um, next matter is another one for members, or Mr. Swenson, resul- Next matter is another one for Members, or Mr. Swenson, Resolution 2020-103, which is the tree removal special assessment. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Swenson on that one? Is there a motion to adopt that resolution on the tree removal special assessment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to Resolution 2020-103.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. Resolution 2020-103 is approved. Next matter is Mr. Swenson, Resolution 2020-106. It's the maintenance special assessment for the Grandview Business District. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Swenson on that proposed special assessment? All right, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-106, which would take care of the special assessments for the business district in the Grandview neighborhood?
So moved.
Motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher?
Staunton.
Member Staunton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
And so Member Staunton. No reason I thought I said her name. But Mayor Houghlin.
Aye. We thought we lost you again.
No.
First, second. All right, the special assessments for the Grandview District are imposed, embodied in Resolution 2020-106.
Thank you.
The next matters before us, Director Milner has, there is first of all, Resolution 2020-100, which is the aquatic vegetation special assessment. Anyone have any questions for Director Milner on that proposed assessment? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-100, the aquatic vegetation special assessment?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All right. All right, Member Brindle moves, Member Fisher seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to adoption of Resolution 2020-100.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. Resolution Number 2020-100, which is the aquatic vegetation special assessment, is hereby approved and imposed. And then Resolution 2020-101 is the 50th and France Maintenance District Special Assessment for improvements down there. Anyone have any questions for Director Milner on that matter? Somebody care to move those special assessments for the 50th and France neighborhood?
So moved.
Member Fisher? Member Staunton, seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to Resolution 2020-101, the 50th and France Maintenance District Special Assessments.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. The 50th and France Special Assessments for that district, embodied in Resolution 2020-101, are approved. Next matter is the Chauvin Park A and B Neighborhood Roadway Reconstruction Project. Director Milner has this matter as well. Are there any questions from council members on this matter? This makes me think, Director Milner, about the fence issue over at Henry Parkhurst at 58th and Chauvin. Was, did we get that issue resolved, or Manager Neil?
Yes, Mayor, that's actually related to this year's project, 58th Street. So we're working through that. We came to a resolution on that item with those property owners.
All right, good, thank you. All right, are there any questions regarding Resolution 2020-97, which is the potential special assessment for the roadway reconstruction improvements in the Chauvin Park A and B Neighborhood? There are no questions, roll call, please. You're on mute, Member Allison, you're on mute.
We did not, we didn't have a?
He skipped the motion.
Oh, he skipped the motion. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move approval.
Who moved it?
I did.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right. Motion by Member Staunton. Thank you, Clerk Allison. Member Fisher, that we adopt Resolution 2020-97, which would impose the special assessments in the Chauvin Park A and B Neighborhood for the roadway improvements over there. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. Those special assessments are approved, embodied in Resolution 2020-97. And next is Resolution 2020-98, which is a potential special assessment for the roadway reconstruction work that was done over in the Indian Hills C Neighborhood. It's embodied in BA 455. Anyone have any questions for Director Milner on that one? If not, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-98?
So moved.
Second.
Member Staunton moves, Member Brindle seconds. Passage of Resolution 2020-98. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. Resolution 2020-98 is approved. Those special assessments will be imposed. Resolution 2020-104 is a street reconstruction special assessment that's posed for the Todd Park Neighborhood. Any questions for Director Milner on that matter? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-104?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. Resolution 2020-104 is approved. Those are special assessments to be levied in the Todd Park Neighborhood. Final matter for Director Milner is Resolution 2020-99, which is the Indian Trails B and C Neighborhood Street Reconstruction Project and the proposed special assessments for that project. Anyone have any questions for Director Milner?
Can I get out of this?
You want to.
No, I'm teasing.
You don't want to vote? I think you should stick your hand up proudly, you should make the motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion, all right.
All right, all right. Member Brindle moves.
Seconded.
Oh, Member Staunton, way to go. Back her up real quick before she gets a chance to back out. All right, Member Brindle moves, and Member Staunton seconds the adoption of Resolution 2020-99, which imposes special assessments in the Indian Trails B and C Neighborhood, including Member Brindle's house.
My house, that's right.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Ow, 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 aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin?
Aye. The resolution is adopted, 2020-99, the special assessments will be made. All right, we're on to item K, and this is one Manager Neil has, and this is going to be a little conversation about Fairview Southdale. And so he can give his position first, I understand it well, and then I'll talk a little bit about some of the things that are concerned to me, and we'll decide what we're going to do with that roughly $250,000 that we allocated to Fairview Southdale from our CARES Act funds. Initially, it was for doing some testing in our community, developing some testing mechanisms, and that didn't get done. And now Manager Neil has a recommendation, and I've got another idea. So, Manager Neil, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm speaking for the status quo tonight. When we put together our initial plan for you to approve back in July for how to spend the federally appropriated CARES Act money in Edina, we staff prepared a plan, we brought it to the council on July 21st, and the council discussed it that evening and approved the plan. The plan was essentially to spend about a half a million dollars of this CARES money in the form of an emergency rent program, another half million as an emergency business assistance program, $250,000 in terms of a partnership with M Health Fairview to do a community testing event. And then the remaining money would be used internally to cover the extraordinary internal costs that the city has had to fight the pandemic. If you look at that from a balanced standpoint, it was about, as I recall, about 40% in the community and about maybe 30% in the community and 70% internal. We weren't able, after a lot of good efforts, to get the community testing event organized and implemented. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that. There are other community testing events, there's a shortage of testing materials at the time. But really, I think Fairview Southdale staff were just really very busy with other activities, and this was just too big of a bite, I think, for everybody to take at that time. So we weren't able to do it. In the language of the council's original approval of the spending plan, there was a provision, if we weren't going to be able to do the community testing event, that the money dedicated to that function would roll into the category of internal expense reimbursement. We have more than enough expenses internally to justify using the additional $250,000 to fund our internal expenses. The benefit of using the money for that purpose is that it's helping to reimburse costs that we've already incurred, thereby relieving the obligation or the tax burden to spend that money, to spend our own money to, on those particular costs. So all of our taxpayers would benefit from that, from that decision. The other aspect of this, though, is that we really haven't had much of an opportunity to do due diligence on the proposal that came to us from M Health. They had, they laid out a kind of a formula for how and how much money they thought the city should provide to them. But we really don't know, and they did also disclose to us for the first time that they had also received CARES Act money as well, $14 million in this case. But we don't know what their total bottom line is as a hospital, as a system. We know that they're adding, you know, at the same time we're having this discussion about providing them financial assistance, we know that they're adding probably somewhere between a $12 and $15 million expansion of the hospital at the same time. So there are parts of their system that are doing well, there are other parts of their system that are suffering. We just haven't had much time to evaluate the due diligence of that. We do know that at least two other cities have received this funding request and have considered it and granted it. Burnsville and Savage are those two cities. And I know that the mayor has a different point of view of this than I do, but I'm here to speak for the status quo. I think the plan that you approved back in July is a good plan. Because the council has taken an action on this item, the first way of undoing that action is a motion, is adopting a motion to reconsider your action back in July, which is what the first thing you need to do if you are going to change your mind on this one. So that's all I've got to say about that. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions for Manager Neil? Here's, you know, before Burnsville decided to give, contribute, I mean, they face the same issues we all face. They've had monies come to them on a per capita basis, just like we did, that they're using for CARES Act relief for their own city. But Burnsville sees the value of the hospital in their community, decided to step up with $161,000, and even Savage contributed $50,000 to the Fairview operation. I just, over the years that I've been involved in local government, I would say that they have been one of our foremost corporate citizens, and we are so fortunate to have a regional hospital in our town. And it provides, not only, not only are they our largest employer, but the sort of medical cluster effect that they've created with all of that medical campus around there because we have a hospital is an extraordinary thing. Maybe more importantly is that every time we asked them for something in the past, they've stepped right up. When we decided that the city shouldn't be buying fireworks anymore on the Fourth of July, it's been Fairview Southdale that's stepped up, spending $20,000 or $30,000 a year. They've stepped up in all kinds of ways over the years that I can recall, and been a really great corporate citizen. And now here they are, through the first six months of the year, having lost over $153 million because of COVID. True, they've gotten some CARES Act monies, but not nearly enough to staunch the damage. They've had to lay off 900 people. Some of those will be laid off in Edina, and they're creating some other jobs, other places, as they kind of realign their business model. But nonetheless, I view this hospital operation as critical to our community, the overall health, both from a public health standpoint, from a personal health standpoint, and from an economic health standpoint, as vital. And I think, even though that amount of money is relatively small, for me personally, I feel like the taxpayers of Edina would like, would say, yeah, let's help the hospital. We can weather through this, you know, we already know we're weathering through it. We got, we got four, four and a half million we set aside in budget stabilization monies. We've cut our budget by a million four. We've done the things that are necessary for us to still maintain our double AAA bond rating. And I just think that it's not a one-way street. It's not just us asking them what they can do for us, it's us helping them too when they're really in dire straits. They're projected now to lose to over $200 million by the end of the year. And I can tell you that for us to step up and say, we're going to shift that $250,000 over from testing to give it to you, to show you that we care about having you here, and care about the health and delivery that you're making for Edina residents, so close to where we've had problems, and being able to send people right to Fairview Southdale that have COVID-related issues or other health-related issues is a real blessing. And I just think this is a chance for us to step up as a town and say, here's what you mean to us, and we're going to share some of this CARES Act money that we got, even though we didn't get enough to take care of all the expenses that we have, we're going to share a little bit of it with you, just like Burnsville did and just like Savage did. So that's my argument, is that we ought to step up and treat them, treat them well in this circumstance where they're suffering. Just like we helped out with emergency rental assistance and emergency small business assistance, we ought to be stepping up here too. So I don't want to put any of the rest of you in an awkward spot here. I'll make a motion that we move to reconsider the allocation of our CARES Act funds as it would pertain to Fairview Southdale Hospital, and that they be, instead of dedicated to Fairview Southdale for a community testing program, that we just make a straight-out donation of those monies set aside of $250,000 of CARES funding directly to Fairview Southdale for their operations. That'll either, if we get a second, then we can have a conversation about it. If we don't, do I go?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a second, well, we can have a discussion. I think I've said what I want to say, and I'd be interested in hearing what the rest of you think. Member Anderson?
Thank you. I listened carefully to Manager Neil earlier, and I thought, I thought coming into this, it would probably be a good idea just to say, you know, let's kick these dollars here. it would probably be a good idea just to say, you know, let's kick these dollars here, use them for what we thought we were intended for. But I want to read this to you, if I may. It's a text I got from my former number two. Thanks, Ron. He's in, he's at Fairview Hospital with his second heart attack. Thanks, Ron. Number's improving. Sending in the, it's an angiogram. He calls it a sewer rat, an angiogram. Morning, see the extent of the damage. We're lucky to have a facility like Fairview Southdale here in Edina. Come to my rescue twice now. So. It's my vote.
Thank you.
I guess the motion that I would have preferred was, would have been a motion to reconsider and then have a discussion about whether each of us has an idea for how, how to repurpose these dollars. For me, if the city has need for the dollars and the dollars were granted to the city, knowing that for the community, the city had intended to put together a testing program, and when that didn't get done, the dollars, I, I think it was intended initially that the dollars would stay in the city. And, and so it's, it's hard for me to let go of the dollars because we do have costs to cover. It's not that the hospital doesn't have costs to cover. I totally understand that. But I, I, I want to keep my, my priority as healthy as I can keep it. And so I'm, I'm hesitant to let the dollars go if they can be put to good use in the city.
The, the use of the CARES Act, this is just a comment that may help, this is an allowable use of CARES Act funds.
I know it is. And so is, so is covering the city's costs.
Yeah. But I'm sure that Burnsville isn't covering their costs, nor is Savage, that they did think that in the scheme of things, that it was important to support the hospital because of the medical services that are provided to the people in their community, especially in a pandemic. So I think that's a pretty compelling case myself, but anyway, Mike or Kevin, either one of you have, let's get your mics off.
I'll chime in. Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with all the things you've said about the important role that Fairview Hospital plays in our community. I think that they're, they're a big part of our community and, and we're, we're lucky to have them here. But when I think about this CARES money, it, and I appreciate, by the way, they're converting their request into an expense-related request rather than a revenue, revenue recovery request, which was, I think ended up being the $191,000 request in materials. But I think the difference for me between Fairview and the other entities that we've contributed our CARES money to is that the small businesses that we targeted with 500,000 and the rental assistance that we targeted with 500,000 are people who are really not likely to get the kind of relief they need and get it in time. And the fact that Fairview has received $14 million already, I just have a hard time saying to our taxpayers that we ought to take the money, basically take their taxpayer money because we'll have to make it up with taxpayer money if we don't use it to cover our expenses and ship it over to Fairview. I get the sentiment, but I, I can't get on board with them.
Poor Mike, you got left in a awkward spot.
Yeah, the, the crazy thing is, I, I could make a strong argument on either case here, and I probably have to myself on both sides. And, you know, I think about, and, and all of these points are completely valid. But as I sit here, I think about, you know, we had essentially agreed to spend this money with Fairview. We just had a specific idea in mind. As it turned out, that idea didn't happen, but testing occurred. There were other avenues. And, you know, I, I'm not going to pretend I understand all of the reasons that idea didn't happen. But I like the idea of using CARES, some of the CARES money with Fairview for a number of reasons. One is they are our front line. Those employees at Fairview, the institution of Fairview has been our front line on this pandemic and frankly, on every other health, health-related issue in our community. We, we are saying that we are a health community, that we are, you know, the Chambers Initiative, our, our initiative ties us directly to Fairview. And, and they have been that leading business there with us all the way. And, and I think for that reason, as I sit here today, I would tend to fall on the side of continuing to, to put that amount of CARES money toward Fairview. And, and I look at that as, you know, we've given money to other private businesses with far less ties to our city. And this is just the, you know, it's a larger amount, but in the scheme of things, it's, it's sort of a relative, relative amount. So I guess I would go on the side of giving the money.
All right. All right. We've got a motion to reconsider our CARES Act spending and to allocate $250,000 of our CARES Act receipts to Fairview Southdale. Any further discussion? This requires, I would take it just a simple majority?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of the motion as stated? Okay, we're going to do roll call. Those in favor of the motion as stated, go ahead with roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Nay.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Nay.
Councilmember, Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you for that good discussion. I think it was said well. It could have, it was compelling arguments on both sides of this issue. All right.
On to, Manager Neil has the next matter, which is a potential appointment of a new city attorney, as we see Roger Knutson winding down his career.
We do. And, and thank you, Your Honor. We got to do this all in front of the old city attorney, or the current city attorney, I guess we'll call him.
The old.
We do need a city attorney of record.
The king is dead. Long live the king.
It's an important factor and important member of our team. We have had a chance to talk about this with Attorney Knutson and his firm, and we would like to, I would like to propose to you the appointment of David Kendall to the position of city attorney for the city of Edina. Mr. Kendall has served us well in, in a, in a variety of assignments. He's done work for us in court, in particular around the White Oaks and Morningside Special Assessment Challenge. He's also in, in federal court with us on the tobacco lawsuit. He has, he has been a good advisor to the city, and he's starting to get more exposure to, to the various aspects of our operations. So I would propose that you approve the appointment of Mr. David Kendall to become our city attorney effective Saturday, October 31st, 2020.
Are there any comments from any council members? Otherwise, I could entertain a motion to that effect.
Well, I'll start with a comment, and that is that I have felt like Mr. Kendall knows what he's doing, and, and I, I think that we are well-served by the advice that he has given us and the work he's doing on our behalf. So I would make a motion to confirm the appointment of Mr. David Kendall as our next city attorney.
Effective October 31st, 2020, Member Brindle?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Staunton.
And I'm wondering, I'm wondering if that means he's going to be at work on Saturday, the 31st.
Well, it's Halloween. It's good to have a city attorney around on Halloween, especially when it's on a Saturday.
It is also voting.
Yeah.
Hey, there you go.
Yeah.
He can use his help.
Yeah.
So he may well be at work on, on Saturday, the 31st.
We actually talked about it. So, yeah.
All right. Roll call with respect to the appointment of David Kendall of the Campbell-Knutson Law Firm to the position of city attorney for the city of Edina effective October 31st, 2020. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Motion passes, and I'm hoping Mr. Kendall will accept the appointment.
He will, right, Roger? He said he would.
All right. Now we're going to move on to correspondence and petitions, and then we have one petition this evening to discuss receipt of it, and that is a petition, petition for improvements to the Braemar Ice Arena, and Councilmember Anderson's been involved in this a bit. And the, the petition we received is fairly perfunctory, and it doesn't talk a little bit of some of the work you guys have been doing out there. I don't know, Member Anderson, you want to talk at all about this before we decide whether to receive the petition? But I think it would be valuable if you would give us some comments.
Sure, I can. Thank you. There has been kind of a loosely formed ad hoc committee, including several, several former hockey players in the community, some current hockey players, a lot of EHA personnel. Ann Swenson has sat in on this. I know that Director Vedder has been part of it. I believe that Manager Neil attended at least the initial meeting of that group. Peter Fitzgerald has been the lead on that, who has been of some service to the city in the past. The concern, I think, on the part of the signers of the petition and, and many others in the community is the fact that Braemar has begun to show the, show the signs of deferred maintenance over the course of time. There's, I think, a lot of concern about that. The, the architect who did the Hornets Nest over there has stepped forward and drawn a couple of designs for a future transformation there. At this time, I think that the, the intent of this petition is to go through the very needed, much-needed maintenance that the facility deserves. I would say that hundreds of families, thousands of kids go through that facility on an annual basis, spend a lot of time there. It's clear that when we talk about brand in our city, I think that one of the things when it comes to certainly high school league sports is hockey. We run tremendous number of state tournaments. All of us have had interface interactions with kids who play there. You know, the coaches, they're all staunch members of the community. And so as a, I think a reminder of the necessary repairs and refurbishments that are necessary there, this petition was, was signed by a significant group of people and is now available to us to accept. Maybe Director Vedder has further comments on that.
Thank you. Director Vedder?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Anderson is correct. I think staff in working with the, the boosters, the members of the hockey community, I think we kind of distilled our conversations down to just a couple of things, and that was kind of those short-term improvements of deferred maintenance, heading into the, the user or the participant experience. And then what would it take to have a long-term vision for Braemar Arena? And I think as Councilmember Anderson kind of pointed out, the petition is a show of support. I indicated when I did email this petition out to you in advance that kind of a similar goal, staff does support and propose a number of projects that are in your capital improvements program for consideration as you finish out the rest of this year. Those improvements are supported by these members. In addition, I think they, they really want to know that they support, cherish Braemar Arena. It has a wonderful legacy, and they want to ensure that it maintains that center of the hockey universe as it's been described. And what a better place to, to, to spend time there. So that's all the comments I had tonight on that, that issue.
Okay. Good. Member Anderson, would you care to move the receipt of the petition dealing with the potential improvements to Braemar Arena?
I'd very much like to. So move.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Member Fisher. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Allison, with respect to the motion to receive the petition for improvements to Braemar Arena.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brindle?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
The motion to receive the petition for requested improvements to Braemar Arena is received, and it will be referred over to the park commission. Thank you, Director Vedder, and thank you, Member Anderson. Correspondence and petitions. Any correspondence that's come in, Manager Neil that you're aware of, or anyone else? Ms. Garsky?
You've got all that we've got.
Okay. Aviation noise update. Member Brindle, anything there?
Thank you. The Fall Listening Session is going to take place Wednesday, October 28th, and it's really going to be around a discussion of the 2021 Noise Oversight Committee Work Plan. And I plan to attend. And then the next Noise Oversight Committee meeting will be the week of November 18th. And I think it'll be Wednesday, the 18th. That's what it's scheduled for at this point. There are no other, there's no other information on it. So as that date gets closer, then we'll know more about that meeting. But that's, that's what I have. The airport is quiet and continues to be quiet.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Member Brindle? All right. Council comments. Member Fisher?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
All right. Member Brindle?
Um, just continuing my, my work to understand and be more knowledgeable about anti-racism, participating in the Rotary International Series on that, as well as some neighborhood conversations. And in the Rotary International Series on that, there's homework for it. So I have several books that I'm reading before the next session, which is November 5th. It is, it's very enlightening. It's, it causes you to do a lot of self-examination, and it really is, I mean, I, I probably wouldn't do this if, if it isn't something that I had gotten into, and, and I've jumped in with both feet. It's very interesting.
Thank you, Member Brindle. Member Anderson?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of quick things for me. TAB meeting tomorrow. We're working on the next regional solicitation. And then a really great piece of news for somebody that, that I have a close relationship with out at Braemar, our pro emeritus, Joe Grupner, has been named- has been named PGA Teacher of the Year by the Minnesota section of the Professional Golfers Association.
Wow.
Totally unsolicited, the committee called him and said, you're going to be Teacher of the Year this year for the Minnesota PGA. So that was really quite a great honor for him and for Braemar and all these years he spent out there and still teaching out there with, with students. So congratulations to Joe. I'm going to take him to lunch on Thursday and buy him some lunch, that's the least I can do. And then Manager Neil and I were part of an MLC conversation last week, which on the face of it, we found disconcerting because there's a bill that our rep, Steve Elkins, has asked House Research to draft. And it deals with his concern about the lack of affordable housing in the region and his notion of how that ought to be resolved or helped or assisted. And Manager Neil, I don't know if you want to comment on it in more detail than that right now. But it does involve fiscal disparities and it involves capturing the value of new properties over 500,000 in value and sending most of that money, that property tax money to a fiscal disparities pool, as best I can understand it. Manager Neil couldn't explain it in more detail, and that's all I have. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just to pick up on that. It is, it is a concept that cities have faced before, and that is the creation of a fiscal disparities pool that would feed off the value of high value homes. And in this case, the high valued home is a, you know, home, at least in the definition of the, of the draft legislation, anything over $500,000, which in Edina is about 60% of our homes. And it's about 7,600 homes that would be impacted. But more importantly, our city budget would be impacted because of the, just the way that the math works on estimated market values and fiscal disparities. So we are reaching out and to Representative Elkins and wanting to have dialogue with him about this. And he has accepted that. So we're, we're still working on kind of date, time and location, but we are engaging in a conversation with him to learn a little bit more about how the mechanics of this might work. But on its face, it would not be good for our community and actually for a lot of communities. On a happier note, though, I want to report to you that the, finally, the approval of the, the state's infrastructure bill, the bonding bill, did include a million dollars in it for the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility. So we've worked very hard, asking for five and getting one. But that's one more than we've had for, we've ever had, with the exception of the start of the place. So we're pretty happy and we really owe some support to Representative Elkins and particularly Edelson and Senator Franzen for their work on, on behalf of Edina on this. And also the legislators representing our partners, Needen Prairie and Bloomington, in the Metropolitan Air Force Committee. So this, this action has been approved. There will be an action where the city council has to accept it and pledge to use it for the public purposes it was granted to us for. So those are some more, those are some more actions that will come back to you ultimately. But we are getting, we've got a board meeting next week out there where we'll just make some decisions about how to allocate those capital improvements within our building. So that's all I've got, thank you.
All right, you did cause me to think about the bonding bill in one other way. And I don't know if you even know about this, Scott, but in the bonding bill was for monies for, I think rehabilitation of some buildings in the Education Department over at the University of Minnesota. And the bonding bill was the trigger for a local donation from Jim and Carmen Campbell, who were going to donate $8 million contingent on this getting approved in the bonding bill. So they're going to make a significant contribution to the Department, the Education Department at the University of Minnesota by virtue of this bonding bill being passed, yeah.
Your child development building.
Really, really impressive. So that's it. And you have no other comments, Manager Neil?
Nope, that's all I've got.
But I do.
Yes, Member Anderson?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind that tomorrow night is the community conversation on race, justice and policing. That'll be from 7:00 to 8:30. The chief of police and police officers, several local residents are part of that discussion group. That's televised on the, our Edina channel, I think that's 8:13. I'm not sure about the analog channel, which one that is. It's also on Facebook. I believe it is on, will that be on Facebook, what else?
16.
16, Channel 16.
16, yeah, but there's another venue for it, I think. It'll probably be on our website, streamed on the website. Okay, so, yeah, so there's lots of options to see it, just a reminder on that.
What time was that again, Ron?
7:00 to 8:30.
7:00 to 8:30, thanks for mentioning that. I was going to mention that, ask Manager Neil to allude to it after Member Brindle's comment, so. Yeah, okay, thanks. All right, that's it, folks, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, moved.
There a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Fisher to adjourn the meeting of the Edina City Council on October 20, 2020. Any further discussion?
Stay on for the HRA meeting.
Oh, yeah. That's right. I'll get my little script out here. Hold on. Let me see if there's anything in there I needed to cover. Yeah, so just stay on, this meeting is adjourned. And just hang in, we're here with us, and then Scott Dent will be back with us momentarily.